Well, good evening. It is seven o'clock and it, yeah, it doesn't say seven o'clock there, but it is seven o'clock, Ken. Ken looked at me and said, looked at the clock and said, "It's not," but it is. It is seven o'clock and it's Tuesday, July 27th, 2021, and we are in the council chambers for the City of Platteville's second meeting of July, the common council meeting. So Candace will start with roll call.
Jason Arts?
Here.
Robin Klein? I'm so sorry. Isaac Shanley?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Kathy Kopp?
Here.
Barbara Dos?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, the first item on our agenda is a public hearing. This is ordinance 2104, rezoning a portion of 130 Ellen Street. Joe?
Yes, yeah, so the applicants for this request have recently purchased property at 130 Ellen Street, which is a single-family home. They also own the adjacent property at 125 South Water Street. That's a mixed-use building, commercial uses on the ground floor, apartments on the second floor. And so their request, and the reason they bought that Ellen Street property, the primary reason was they have parking for the, to the rear of the building, kind of uphill from the commercial area, and they, but they don't have enough parking for one vehicle space for each potential tenant, for each bedroom. So they've had some interest from prospective tenants on additional parking, so they had an opportunity to expand that, so they're, they're working on that. So what they'd like to do is take a portion of that property, approximately 2,500 square feet of that Ellen Street property, transfer it to the Water Street property, and expand the parking area for those apartments, keeps going in and out.
Yeah, because you have to lean toward it.
So logically, if they're transferring that property to the commercial property, we would suggest the best course of action would also be to rezone that portion to B2 Central Business, so it has the same zoning as the rest of that property. Currently, the Ellen Street property is R2, one and two-family residential. The commercial property is B2 Central Business District, so that would be the logical zoning for that property. So there's a separate action that they're taking to actually transfer the ownership through a certified survey map, so that, once that's done and recorded, it'll become part of that Water Street property. So obviously, they'll be adding that parking, so they'll be expanding the parking area, adding some additional hard surfacing. There was a question that came up at the last meeting regarding the stormwater. There is an inlet, actually right, right next to where they're going to be expanding that parking, stormwater inlet in that parking area now, so it'll be designed to drain into that. In addition, there's other inlets on the Water Street property, so anything that overflows that inlet will be directed to another inlet, west of the driveway to that parking area. And then from there, it's transferred out. All the adjacent residential properties are uphill from the parking area, so they would not be impacted by any stormwater runoff from that parking area. So this item did go to the plan commission after July 6th meeting. The plan commission did recommend approval of that request, and staff also recommends approval of the request to rezone the property. I would add a contingency on there that it would be, rezoning is contingent upon the property actually being added to the 125 South Water Street parcel. It's not actually made part of that parcel, it really doesn't make any sense to change the zoning.
Okay, any questions of Joe? So you're saying, in addition to your request, your recommendation to approve the request, that that should, that recommendation be, should be expanded to include a certified survey map that shows the addition of this piece of property to the Water Street property? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm saying that the rezoning should be contingent upon that property being added to that.
Okay, everybody understand that? Any questions of Joe? Otherwise, I believe the property owners are in the audience tonight, and so at this point in time, in a public hearing, we have the applicant statement. So Joe and/or Rhonda Wolf, if you want to come to the podium. Joe and Rhonda reside at 23370 North Bangston Road in Epworth, Iowa, and you guys own the mixed-use building and now the property at 130 Ellen, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, so it's your turn to talk to us.
I think Joe stated everything pretty clear. We're basically just want to expand our parking lot, so our tenants got ample room, so they, usually, we got 13 spots right now and potentially 16 tenants, so three of them might have to be parking out in the street, and we want to eliminate that.
Okay, questions of Mr. or Ms. Wolf? Wolf? Is that, did I say that right? Right? I was the one that raised the question about stormwater the last time and the treatment of water. You will also be building a retention wall?
A retaining wall on the backside, it's on the uphill side of the parking lot.
Okay, and Joe, is that retaining wall of the height that it's required to be permitted and engineered?
From my indication, it's going to be a four-foot-high wall, which does not have to be engineered. Any wall that's taller than six feet would have to be engineered.
Okay.
So what's the height going to be of this wall? Four feet. I was out to the property today, and I would say the property's more like...
It's about six feet right now.
Six feet.
Yeah, when we get the wall in, we're gonna landscape the upper part back to the driveway on the upper, on 130 Ellen Street, to get it down to that. We didn't want to disturb all that until we get our wall in.
Okay, then...
And also, there's gonna be two feet of wall, there'll be two feet of wall, and then two feet of gravel behind that for drainage, so there'll be a lot of backfill going in there, over, you know, six, you know, from where you're seeing that dirt cut to where the back of that wall's gonna be, will be another four feet of ground that'll have to be covered.
Yeah, but we're gonna slope it back, you know, from the driveway for 130 Ellen Street there, slope it down to the retaining wall.
Okay, so there'll be a slope, that'll be grass, and then there's a house next door, which appears to be vacant, and that will also be sloped by that, for that house?
Well, yeah, well, we ain't gonna do too much with that bank there.
We just kind of grubbed it out, just to get...
There's some brush and stuff there.
Lots of brush, and we had an opportunity to haul it out of there that day, so...
And then the next area, I believe, is, a few trees are standing, so you couldn't be sloping that.
No, them trees are gonna stay there.
Otherwise, you'd be taking out the trees.
Yeah, we're gonna keep them trees there, yeah.
Well, my, my concern is, as far as the slope and the safety of the people that will be mowing lawn there, I assume, so, so when they get to the four feet, that's drop off.
Yeah, but after we're done, the slope shouldn't be any worse than the neighbor's slope that got there now, at, was it 110 Ellen, or with the next, the one at the corner? His ground don't have a wall, but it's gonna slope about the same as his ground.
That's the corner house.
Yeah, the corner house. So our slope will be about what his slope is now.
If I could show, if I could present kind of the graph of what's gonna be behind that wall. So he's like, this is the landscape behind there, so they won't actually have grass cutting, so there'll be trees and bushes and...
Where's, where is 130 Ellen?
Uh, this whole thing is 130 Ellen.
130 here.
But the house, Ken, is to your right, I think, isn't it?
No, abandoned house would be to the right.
Right, that's over here, that's over here.
It'd be over here.
And 130 Ellen has its own driveway?
Right.
Back there.
Yeah. It's about up here.
And your parking is, is right here.
This is what's existing.
Yep.
And this is what we're adding.
Yeah, so my concern is that it's not too steep as far as safety of the people.
Right.
Okay? When I looked at it today, it looked like a...
Well, we gotta put a foot of rock in there, too, so that's gonna raise it up some from that six feet. Have a base under the wall and the block top, so we gotta put a foot in yet.
There'll be a foot, a foot in underneath the blocks, concrete blocks that are going in. There'll be at least a foot of rock under that. So are you using those big?
Yeah, big concrete blocks.
And so are they gonna be stacked one on top of each other?
Yeah.
And so, pardon?
Two levels staggered.
Too high.
Yeah.
And what, what keeps them?
They kind of have a...
They got a little groove in them, so they don't slide.
And the top and the bottom has like a void, you know? Decorative ones, we want it to look nice as well.
Yeah. Two blocks.
Too high, yeah.
Two blocks.
So it'll be eight feet?
No, each block is two feet.
Two feet, okay.
All right, anybody else with questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you. The next part of a public hearing, then, are public statements in favor. Nobody has registered to speak in favor. Then we would take public statements against, and I have no registrations to speak against, and then we would just take public statements in general. And again, I have no registrations of any kind, other than the ones from the Wolves for this particular public hearing. So now we're to council discussion. Then I would seek a motion to close the public hearing.
Moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Isaac and a second by Kathy to close the public hearing. Candace will vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Kopp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item on our agenda, then, after a public hearing, is if the common council has any action it would like to take.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the request to rezone a portion of the property located at 130 Ellen Street to B2 Central Business District, contingent upon the property being added to the 125 South Water Street parcel. Again?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this recommend, a staff recommendation of rezoning this and contingent on the property being added to the property on Water Street. We'll vote, Candace?
Arts?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Kopp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on our agenda is a presentation from UW Platteville on the 2021 Student Welcome Week, and Lisa, I understand you're here to speak with us.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for a few minutes of your time this evening. Appreciate the opportunity to talk a little bit about our upcoming welcome week. I have a schedule I'm gonna pass around while I'm highlighting some things. It's nice to be here this year. About a year ago, we were frantically pivoting and turning everything into virtual events, and we're very excited to welcome all of our new and returning students who's here to what we hope is a great series of in-person events, as you'll see on the calendar here. Some of the key things for you to know is that move-in day is going to be Saturday, September 28th, for primarily our new first-year students. We are also opening up that to our returning second-year students who didn't really get a normal welcome week last year, so hopefully some of those will elect to come early and participate with us this year. So that's Saturday. The students and their support, family and guests will be there, moving into the halls. Then we will start having some of our activities with them. For a kickoff on Saturday, I wanted to highlight that we will be doing a picnic outside of the marquee that evening, and then a kickoff celebration on our new turf practice field on campus. Some of you may remember that in the past, we've done a kickoff picnic that afternoon down in City Park, and it's five days this week instead of three, not Labor Day weekends, so we've been working with the chamber to do some other activities this year. So everything will be on campus for the first day. The kickoff, we are hoping for something very high-energy with Playfair, for the students to get to know each other a little bit and get excited about being here with us. On Sunday, we will continue with some educational sessions for the students, and the big program that day will be Bridge Fest in the afternoon, which is sort of like a big involvement fair on high-powered with inflatables, all sorts of fun for the students, where they get acquainted to the campus organizations. And then we'll be doing some programming for them that night with Bingo, which they love, very popular event all year, in the marquee, and the residence halls will be doing some programming. On the Monday, as they start the regular week, we will be launching into some more academically focused sessions and activities where they can meet their professors. The Flat Pete Pursuit is an activity we actually started last year during our virtual world, where we hide flat peats all over campus, and the students hunt for them and redeem them for prizes. It's a way to get them to be familiar with campus. Then we will have an on-campus job fair I wanted to highlight, and ending up with a beach party inside the marquee that night for the students. On Tuesday, we will be doing our traditional service project, Pioneers Pay It Forward, primarily on campus, and we're still working on locking in all of those sites, more academic activities for them, and then Tuesday is the day where our students will be doing the Merchant's Scavenger Hunt, primarily downtown here in the city, to get acquainted with our merchants. Then we have a hypnotist show for them, and I think what is going to probably be my favorite event of the whole week, the late-night breakfast over in one of our dining centers, with hopefully a lot of our administrators there helping flip pancakes and serve the students. And then the last day before classes start is that Wednesday, the first, more academic activities, highlighted by our convocation, where our chancellor and provost will be speaking to the new students, some open houses, and then that afternoon, we actually have some of our first athletic events of the semester, with some soccer games going on, and then our traditional outdoor movie and Pizza Palooza Fest, and that will be on the marquee lawn as well. And this year, we are doing a flashback movie, Finding Nemo, so one of those Disney flicks from way back and going with sort of our beach, all- aboard, welcome theme for the week. So most of our activities are on campus. There shouldn't be too many issues with noise or things. I know a few years ago, we had a huge outside Big Glow dance party with lots of techno music that had a lot of bass, and that was very loud, but a lot of that shouldn't be an issue this year, so we are very much looking forward to having all of our new students return to campus. I'm sure you're all excited to have them back in the city as well. I always find summer a little too quiet for me when the students leave, so I'm always ready for them to be back. And we're hoping everything will be in pretty much normal mode. I will share with you also that we are planning Family Weekend and Homecoming in October, October 2nd for the Family Weekend Saturday, October 23rd for Homecoming Saturday, and at this point, we are hoping that those events will be what you would have typically seen in the past as well, with the parade and the fireworks and the lighting of the M on Saturday. Fingers crossed, as everything goes well. So those were just a couple of the events I wanted to highlight for you. I do appreciate the chance for us to come every year and just make sure you're all in the loop. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have or provide any additional info.
Thank you, Lisa.
Very welcome. Look forward to seeing some of you.
Looks like a very comprehensive program, and from what I hear, we already have, you already have some students here.
We had some in-person visit days last week for some of our new students, where they were here with some of their parents and guests, and they did a series of info sessions and meetings, and then some open houses across campus, where they could see some of the buildings, meet some of the faculty and staff and departmental staff, and get a little bit more acclimated. I think you bring up a good point. Some of these students haven't really had a chance to have a visit day, and so we were very happy to be able to have them on campus last week and start getting them acclimated and starting to get to know them, so...
Great, good. Well, thank you, and here's to a very successful academic year.
Yeah, thank you.
Good. Okay, the next item on our agenda is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate if you prefer a separate discussion or action. We have the council minutes from July 13th, both the special and the regular session. We have payment of bills, appointments to boards and commissions. Tonight, I have two. One is Barb Stockhausen to the Freudenreich Animal Care Advisory Committee to a partial term ending May 1st, 2022. A second is Eileen McCartney to the Community Safe Routes Committee for a partial term ending September 1st, 2023. And again, I would encourage people to make application. The list, there's still quite a list. We're still looking for a lot of people, so please make application. Licenses, we have a temporary Class B to serve fermented malt beverages to the Friends of our gallery, doing business as the Roundtree Gallery at the City Park for Chalk and Cheese Fest, which is scheduled for Saturday, August 14th, from 1:00 to 8:00. We have a Class B, temporary Class B to serve fermented malt beverages and wine, requested by the Platteville J.C.s, who, for the Brodsky Center and the park area, for the Lime Fire Farewell Show on Friday, August 27th, from 5:00 to midnight, and then we have several one- and two-year operator licenses to sell and serve alcohol. Do I hear any questions or any motions?
I move to, excuse me, move to approve all items listed under the consent calendar.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar as presented. We'll vote, Candace?
Arts?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Kopp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda are citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any, and I have gotten no requests, oop, it's not a request to speak now, oh, it's just, okay. So I've had no request to speak during this portion of the agenda, so we'll move on to the reports. We'll move on to the reports. Board, Commission, and Committee Minutes. The Plan Commission, there was a whole six-month of Plan Commission Minutes in your packet. Isaac, anything to add? Okay, Museum Board, Eileen?
Just to note that the museum is open, and please visit the museum often, get a mine tour. The August 21st is what they call mine days at the museum, from noon until 3:00. Be an exciting day with lots of activities for all ages, and also, there are raffle tickets that are being sold right now by the Friends of the Museum for fundraising for the museum, so if you would like more information on the raffle, contact the museum office, and they can help you on that.
Library Board, we don't have anyone right now representing the council on the library board. Airport Commission, Kathy?
Um, nothing new to add.
Except the upcoming pancake.
Oh, the pancake breakfast, yes.
Can't forget the pancakes.
August 8th.
August 8th?
Eight.
I'm gonna look on my calendar.
There's my note.
It's actually on my calendar.
It is.
It is August the 8th. The airport pancake breakfast is August the 8th, Sunday. It starts at 7:00 in the morning and goes until, I guess, people get tired of eating pancakes, I don't know, for a while, anyway. All right, so the upcoming pancake event. Other reports in your packet were the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee Minutes. Any questions on that? Okay, then we'll move on to our action items for tonight. So the first of these is, last meeting, our special meeting, we interviewed four candidates who had applied to fill the unexpired term of Robin Klein, who had resigned her at-large alderperson position at the end of May. This term, her term will actually expire in April of next year, so this appointment would be effective the beginning of August, I mean, the first meeting for this person would be in August, and they would be up for election then, or if they chose to be in the April, their term would expire in April. So Adam, you want to explain how we're gonna do this?
Sure. So obviously, you have four very exciting candidates that made a petition that they would be interested in obviously serving the city of Platteville, so how this process works is each of you should have a piece of paper that kind of looks like this. It's going to be a secret ballot, and then it'll be turned in, obviously, to Candace, who'll be collecting that, or I'll come and collect it and hand it to Candace, and then she will obviously then read out loud the votes. The way this process works is essentially, at the end, we have to get to where a, there's been four council members that have essentially made a majority on one of the candidates. So in the event that there is not consensus between the four, the process, which has been used in the past, is the top two candidates out of that pool then move to another vote. So essentially, if you have four candidates, let's say one of them gets two, another one gets two, and then there's one and one, the top two votes would then go into another bracket, and you would vote again by secret ballot, and it would be the same thing until essentially you can come to a consensus. In the event you would not be able to come to a consensus, you, as a council, do have the option to consider to just keep the position open. I would not recommend that, but obviously, that's, we'll see how this process goes. So essentially, right now, what you are going to be doing is putting on that ballot the candidate you would like to see fulfill that term, and then I will come around and pick it up and hand it to Candace, and then she will read out loud the votes, and we'll keep going until we see if we can get consensus.
Hey.
Because I have to read so-and-so voted for.
You need to put their name.
Yeah. Sorry.
Nope, that's okay. So redo, so you have to put your name.
Secret ballot with your name.
Secret ballot with your name and candidate.
So the reason we do it this way is so that if Mr. Shanley says so-and-so, then we don't have everybody down the line voting for that same person, because they want to be sure to vote as Mr. Shanley votes. So it's, it's your individual vote, but then the public needs to know who voted for who, whom. There's only a secret to you folks while it's happening. Yeah. Kathy Kopp voted for Dennis Cooley. Ken Killian voted for Akshay, I hope I'm saying that right, Sukhul. Isaac Shanley voted for Dennis Cooley. Barbara Dos voted for... Barbara Dos voted for Lynn Parrott. Eileen Nichols voted for Lynn Parrott. So we have three votes for Lynn Parrott, two for Dennis Cooley, and one for Mr. Sukhul.
So now it goes to the next, so now it will be between Lynn and Dennis. So now those are the two candidates that you are voting for. So name and candidate.
Kathy Cobb voted for Dennis Cooley. Jason Arts voted for Lynn Parrott. Eileen Nichols voted for Lynn Parrott. Isaac Shanley voted for Dennis Cooley. Barbara Dos voted for Lynn Parrott. Ken Killian voted for Lynn Parrott. Four for Lynn Parrott and two for Dennis Cooley.
There we go.
That elects.
That elects Lynn Parrott to finish out the term. So we will, both Candace and I will get in contact with her, and we'll do the official at the next meeting.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, and before we conclude this, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody who applied, because we have never had this much interest before, so that's excellent. Any and all would have been good on the council. So maybe this speaks well for our next election. Okay, moving on to our next item on the agenda then. We have a notice of claim, Farady Holding LLC. And that would be Adam.
Take it away, yep. So obviously, this has been on the agenda for a couple of times now for you to give some insight into it. What this is, is the city received kinda two notices of claims from Dan Farady, who we believe is in attendance, I think I saw him over there, there he is. Obviously, having some concerns with his property in regards to water runoff and damage. So that was something that, when we obviously received this information, we forwarded it to our insurance company and kinda did the due diligence of looking into what has the city done in regards to, you know, some of the concerns that were brought up in the claim. As you can see in the staff note, and as we've talked about throughout this, there was a project that was done in 2017 to try to assist and address some of the concerns, obviously, that were going on with the road and with the property at the time. So what is going on right now is because this is a legal process, the city has to formally provide notice to Mr. Farady and also his attorney by August twenty-fourth of 2021. So what you'll see, obviously, in the staff note is this information was reviewed by both the insurance company as well as the municipal attorney. And the recommendation coming from both the insurance company and the attorney, obviously, is to deny this claim. If that would be done, then the notice that would be sent to Mr. Farady and obviously the attorney would start a six-month process where then essentially it could be taken, further action could be taken, obviously either in court. Otherwise, you know, it would be up to the council then, if you want to go in a different direction, what that would mean in kinda the process. So that's kinda the options that are on the table for tonight, and that's why it is up for action for council consideration, because obviously, we do need to make a decision before the twenty-fourth in order to make sure we are honoring the legal requirements for both Mr. Farady and the attorney.
Okay, questions of Adam by any council person?
Well, I have a question, I'm not sure directed to whom.
Sure.
But in the document, either from the insurance company or the attorney, was part of the reason it was denied because of timing? Was there a deadline that was missed?
So there are two, there are two reasons that essentially are recommendations that are coming from both the insurance company as well as the attorney. There are two issues that I guess came up in the investigation. One was kind of alluding to your timing, is there is a question as to, there's a hundred and twenty days that you have to report an incident. Now, obviously, if you look at the notice, the notice indicates that it was during, I believe, last August, when it was El Doratio, if I remember correctly, was the storm, that, you know, some additional damage occurred. But obviously, through the conversations, there have been issues that have proceeded since almost kind of, I think, the building of this property that date back to when it was built, which kinda predated the 2017, when the city did a street project to try to correct this. So there is some question as to, you know, if this would go to court, that would be definitely a conversation point that would be discussed, is whether or not it meets the qualifications of that. The other issue, obviously, that is presented in this is there has not been a damage claim that's been awarded, which is one of the requirements that is in there. So that is obviously another reason that the municipal attorney has advised, you know, potentially to deny the claim, but that is something, obviously, that the council can review as you see fit.
Any other questions of Adam?
So, in six months, we could meet as a council and consider this claim as far as whether or not we would do funding of what he is talking about as far as damage.
So if you were to deny this claim, what would happen then is that would require staff to issue a formal letter that would have to go to the attorney and then also Mr. Farady. What would happen then is they would have six months essentially from that date that we sent that denial to bring something into court for, you know, damages. So there would have to be a particular dollar amount that would be discussed, and then that would be technically then out of the city's hands, that would be in the court to determine if the city would be responsible for paying the entire amount, a portion of that amount, that would obviously be the entire court case.
But does the council, at that time, six months, discuss, again, discuss more thoroughly his particular claim? Or we, or, that's, that's my question. Shouldn't the council discuss it in six months before he has to go to court? So you're saying that he has to go to court?
It would have to be correct. The next step would be, if you're denying the claim, the next option is it has to be filed in court. Unless the council, I guess, there is the opportunity where if enough council members wanted to go in a different direction, you could make that decision.
Well, my next question, we also, do we also have the option that tonight, we could vote, vote against denial?
You could, yes. So what would happen, then the question would be, if you're not denying the claim, it becomes a question of how then are you handling that issue? Are you going to take, you know, very similar to any capital improvement project that we have, is it going to be weighted against other capital improvement projects? Or are you basically going into the budget saying whatever that cost is going to be is something that the city is going to take on? So those would obviously have to be, if that's the direction that the council wants to move in, those would be parameters that would have to be fleshed out.
Well, personally myself, I, I believe that's the direction to go, because when you look at this amount of damage and the distance that it covered, which is relatively small, I think we're, in my opinion, better off doing it that way than to move this forward six months and then it has to go to court. I don't believe in that setup. I've seen, as far as my past experience, where people have been denied, you know, a claim, and then their face would go into court and trying to prove something, which I said last time, may be too costly for them to do. And I also said last time that I believe it's the city's responsibility to bring about the total, it's the city's total responsibility for conducting water to a safe outlet, and this was not done, done on the part of the city. And we've seen this in a number of places. So those are my comments. I, in my last comments, I went out to look at the property after the last major storm. This was two days after that Wednesday storm, and I, again, I, I could see evidence there of the damage to his blocktop, and also damage taking place to the lawn. And so I think this is something that needs to be done in a good fashion as far as helping out one of our citizens here in Platteville. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Any other questions or comments?
A question, I guess I'm, so this has been something that obviously has been ongoing. How does the average person know that there's a hundred and twenty days type thing? I mean, is that something that is common knowledge? Or seems to me that, that it leans towards a technicality, if it's not something that should be known, if there's an issue that you have so many days, it's sort of like a warranty on a car, you've got so many miles or whatever, so you're kinda keeping an eye on it? I don't know.
Any other questions, comments?
Was it known at the time of purchase that there eventually could be runoff issues of the property? It says it was vacant until 2012, no problems were noted. 2012 constructed a residential box, and then that's when the problem started.
I was never made aware of any problems or issues prior to the construction of the, of the building. I mean, the water, prior to the construction of the building, always went there, it's just there were no buildings or parking lots or anything else at the time. It would just go across grass, grassy areas.
I'm trying to remember, was it ever stated if the drainage and the runoff problems were better or worse after the 2017 construction?
I think that's an opinion that you would have to ask the applicant as much as anything. I, I personally think that the situation was much improved, but, you know, that's, that's my professional opinion.
Any other questions? Comments?
I have a comment, and this, I believe I said before, and this was that I was, received a call from the two neighbors close to the property, and, and they wanted to get this street improved sooner. And what bothered me was that there was no curb and gutter on the lower end, and that those two neighbors were hauling in gravel to replace the gravel which was being washed out. And this was being washed out onto the property of Mr. Farady, and I think also the neighbor. So I'm, I'm wondering why there was such a delay in carrying out this project as far as at least putting some blocktop on top of this street so that the gravel would not be going down onto the properties of the, of the neighbors. So this, this strikes me as rather strange. Also now, when I, when I look at this setup, as far as what was done, as far as any street work that's done beyond the end of, end of Lower Street, there's nothing beyond Lower Street going toward the riprap, which was put in in 2017. And that also brings up another question as far as the riprap. How bad was the situation as far as the riprap at 2017? And was the riprap a result of the two buildings, the two properties of Mr., of our person here affected, were they the reason for the riprap being put in? And how, how deep was the erosion as far as along Water Street? So there's, to me, there are unanswered things here as far as what has taken place. So that's my comments at this point.
Anybody else with questions, comments, or a proposal for action?
I take a motion. I move the city of Platteville to officially disallow the claim of Farady Holdings LLC in conformance with the Wisconsin statute eight, nine, three, dash, eight, zero.
You have a motion? Second, and a second. Candace will vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cobb?
No.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the 2022 budget proposed timeline. Adam?
Or Nicola, pardon me. Either one.
Cool.
Um, so you saw the timeline last, at our last council meeting. Each year, we, we schedule the budget process, we coordinate with the Water Sewer Commission, the Airport Commission, the department directors, and the council to come up with a schedule to develop the budget and implement the budget and adopt the budget in November, November the twenty-third. And the only change that we have to the proposed timeline from the one you saw at the last council meeting is the addition of presentation of the proposed 2022 utility CIP to the Water Sewer Commission on Tuesday, August the tenth, which is actually a change from the regular meeting day of Wednesday, and that's because Adam and I will be at the Wisconsin City Managers Association meeting, conference on the Wednesday. So that was the addition. Other than that, everything is the same as you saw at the last meeting.
And I know the only other thing that came up was a concern about the Tuesday, August seventeenth is when we have kind of the special meeting for the common council review to look at the 2021 kinda strategic plan goals and then establish 2022 goals. I've been notified that we have a council member that has something going on, on that day, so potentially, we would have to look at rescheduling that. You know, possibly, we could look at Thursday, August nineteenth as an option. I know there is an event going on at the Brodsky Center for the PCA, so that could cause a little bit of some issues there, because I know most of us attend those or have been asked to kinda make an appearance. So that would be one, potentially, we would have to look at as either, you know, possibly either the, I think the nineteenth would work, or we'd be looking at having to reschedule that to a different day.
Hey, folks.
And other than the ones that are noted at six o'clock, we're looking at seven o'clock for the remainder of them?
Correct, because they'll all be at normal council times, correct?
Asterix, asterisks are six P.M.
Yes.
Okay, so the water and sewer presentation on August tenth, we know that, thank you. And then the proposal to move the August, Tuesday, August seventeen to Thursday, August nineteen. And then the proposal to move the August, Tuesday, August 17 to Thursday, August 19.
I have no problem with the 19th of August. I'm unavailable on the 19th as well, so.
All right, so, and you want this officially adopted?
We would prefer that, yes.
Okay, do I hear any other questions, comments, or are we ready for a motion? I don't know that we've ever done that, but it's okay.
We did do it last year also.
Did we?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to approve the budget timeline for the city of Platteville 2022 budget and 2022, 2026 CIP with the...
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the propos, now the proposed 2020 budget timeline with the one change to August 19th. Candace will vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on our agenda then is ARPA Funding Budget, the American Rescue Plan Act Funding Budget. And for those who may be in the audience and have not, well, Adam, tell the whole amount that we'll, we'll get and how that'll, go ahead.
Yeah, so where this kind of, this potential action item tonight stems from is on Tuesday, July 13, 2021, the Common Council members participated in a work session dedicated towards the American Rescue Plan Act Funding Opportunities. So during the work session, council members were also, were able to provide suggestions on initiatives they would like to see further developed by the city staff. So in the staff note is a summary of those initial potentials identified by council members during the work session, which was to look at audiovisual technology upgrades to City Hall. Obviously, that was one of the big impacts with COVID was having to go to Zoom. So really looking at being prepared in the future for any potential, you know, hybrid meetings that we need to have or better technology uses that would improve in the event of pandemic. Also looking at some public safety improvements, so specifically potentially funding for radio upgrades and then the camera system located throughout the city. Again, with needing to be able to handle COVID and, and, you know, any type of pandemic, having the ability for camera systems and monitoring definitely would be useful. There was talk about the fire department improvement spaces, HVAC upgrades to city facilities, some housing authority, Housing Authority revolving loan fund, potentially affordable housing initiatives to developers, looking at potentially replenishing lost revenue in the general fund, as well as looking at industrial park stormwater retention ponds or improvements, broadband initiative incentives, and then water and sewer upgrades. So what is happening is the city of Platteville has received the first installment of ARPA funds, which totals $632,564.41. These funds have been allocated to a special revenue fund within the city of Platteville's budgetary accounting. And then city staff anticipates receiving the second installment of funds to occur in quarter one of 2022. So again, that'll be an equal match of the $632,564.41. So one of the things that kind of came out of the work session was for city staff to kind of provide council members with recommendations and cost estimates for the first portion that we have received, just the $632,564. So what the staff note kind of showcases is a preliminary budget that staff would like to use to try to, you know, delve further into the areas that were identified. So obviously, with all of these amounts, because most of the majority of them are high dollar, they would be brought back to the council for final consideration because obviously, anything improving high dollar, we want to make sure that the council has the input as well as the public. So what we have proposed is looking at for the first kind of $630,000 to allocate about $100,000 to go towards audiovisual technology upgrades to City Hall. What this would comprise of is kind of doing a technology analysis. So bringing in, obviously, either through an RFP or through request and proposals, different firms to provide us with cost estimates of what truly makes sense to upgrade, you know, the council chambers, as well as potentially downstairs, we have a long-term plan of doing kind of a training or a conference room, which again, would be utilized for in the event of pandemic, needing to space people out, those type of things. They potentially could be, you know, there could be individuals right now downstairs that could be viewing the same information that's kind of going on up here. The other area then would be looking to allocate about $100,000 towards public safety improvements, which basically would be 100% dedicated towards the camera system. So we currently have a capital improvement project slated for this year for $45,000. We have kind of put the hold on that just with everything going on with COVID and with looking at some of the new upgrades we're getting with the smart poles that we're receiving here coming in the next couple of months, kind of doing a more deep, deep analysis into what makes sense. So that would be partnered, obviously, with this money. So we'd be looking at about $145,000 that we would be utilizing towards kind of a phase one approach of a camera system, which would be looking at putting cameras, obviously, in City Hall, the library, the police department, park and recreation, fire department, and obviously, Public Works Water and Sewer. Then we would be looking at allocating about $13,000 to go towards a HVAC upgrade study that we would be looking to do with our engineering firm and kind of reviewing all of our municipal buildings, as well as the museum and other places for potential HVAC upgrades. One of those areas that we would really be focusing on would obviously be the auditorium because that is one that we've talked about throughout our conversations of, you know, during the pandemic, it was very hard to use that facility because obviously, it does not have any HVAC. So with those upgraded HVAC opportunities, you know, that potentially could be an option again for being able to utilize that in the future during, you know, a pandemic. It would definitely be a worthy cause. Then we've also looked at allocating about $20,000 to go towards the Housing Authority Security Deposit Loan Fund. So this is something, obviously, that would be fleshed out further with the Housing Authority and then be brought back to the council for kind of an official approval of kind of what that would be. You know, we would want to make sure that we're talking, obviously, with all of our appropriate auditors and everybody else to make sure that we're dotting all our Ts and crossing all our Is because that's kind of the number one question that comes out is when you start budgeting these things. You want to make sure you're following the guidelines. So with anything that we do, we want to make sure of that. So we would definitely be checking with all of the appropriate authorities to ensure that. Then we have two areas kind of related to potential incentive opportunities. We looked at allocating about $75,000 to go towards developer housing or land incentives. That was one of the, obviously, the things that came out of the ARPA funds is to use it towards affordable housing. So that is a potential that we would utilize those funds to kind of research that further to see what we could do. As well as $75,000 to go towards broadband provider incentive opportunities. So essentially, looking to see if we could work with broadband providers to either provide some funding to put, you know, conduit in or provide some opportunities to assist to get different options, obviously, for our residents. And then about $250,000 would be allocated directly towards an industrial park stormwater retention pond project. So as we talked about, you know, looking into areas, obviously, that could increase economic development growth is one of the things that can be utilized for this, so that would be a portion of this funds. And then what we've been working on is obviously with Delta 3 and with our Director of Public Works, Howard has identified, obviously, a number of additional city streets, storms and projects that potentially for future use or as we get more into kind of the weeds of specifically looking at the $250,000 for kind of the industrial park stormwater projects. He has identified kind of a list and they've come up with a cost estimates. And I guess I will pitch it over to Howard now to kind of give you guys some insight into, as we've talked about, you know, there's another additional 630-some-thousand coming. So we wanted to obviously not overload you tonight with kind of budgetary numbers, but at least kind of give you some full disclosure of, you know, potential other projects that could be looked at with the second phase of this money. So I will pitch it over to Howard.
Thank you. We didn't have any documented numbers last time. I just had basically a list in my head of a lot of places and, and all that we have issues with water mains or with sanitary sewer or with storm sewers. And so on your desk, I placed a copy of, of a map. I have a larger, there's a larger blown-up version that shows where each of these areas are and some estimated costs. I, I need to say that between the time that Adam put his staff note together and, and the estimates, the estimate, estimated costs for a regional stormwater facility are probably going to be more than what that $250,000 is because there, well, it'll depend on the location. You know, if, if it's a more regional facility that would handle a lot of, a lot of the existing properties out in the industry park, then, then it will probably cost more. And some of that would be because of land costs if we had to purchase any land or easements. Dan is here if you've got any specific questions about any of these items. But I wanted to at least show you the map of some of the areas that, that we've been looking at. And the easy thing on the map is, is sanitary sewer are green squares. Water main are blue triangles and storm sewer are red or orange circles. So when you see a, you know, when you see blue, green and red in the same location, then you know we've got problems, multiple problems in that one location. So that's, that's what we have. If you have any specific questions or comments, you know, we can entertain those or we can look at those in the future for a second allocation.
I have a question.
Yes.
It's likely, likely that there'll be additional infrastructure money. So what are we doing right now to prepare, to submit some of these projects for this additional infrastructure project? Because I can tell you, if you don't have your handout, you're not going to get any money in it. So how, how detailed of a plan do we have prepared? If somebody said tomorrow, could you give me a plan that shows $2 million of infrastructure projects in water and sewer? Would we have that plan ready to go with a timeline?
Probably not, but we'll, we'll keep working toward it. You know, what, what number do we want to, you know, go towards? Do we want to go towards a million? Do we want to go towards 5 million?
I think we want to listen to the radio and TV and go for, you know, I, I really believe that in this current environment that you have to be ready with multiple projects with detail.
I agree with you 100%. So I think if you look at it, this is kind of step one, which was we've got a map. We've got a lot of the identified projects that are on there. Step two is obviously with the budget timeline that you just approved, we are going to have a pretty robust, comprehensive CIP, which is, we've had that, but this is going to be kind of another of those, just as Barb kind of indicated. It's when we get that call of, okay, you know, we've got a week to get this, you know, potential funding in. We're going to have this map, we've got the list of the projects, we've got a CIP, and literally, we can submit that information and, you know, create a narrative and say, all right, here's everything that we could utilize that would be of assistance. So I think we've got the pieces going in the right direction. It's just now to kind of, just like you said, is to start getting that, that comprehensive guide together so that, you know, Howard and I have been working, he's been coming up with, with lists, and we've got meetings kind of scheduled here the next two weeks to start finalizing those CIPs. But yeah, I think as Howard said, you know, do we have anything definite right now? No, but I think within the next kind of couple of weeks, we'll have a pretty good document that I think if we had to piece something together, we'll be ready.
You know, I guess like what Barb said, you know, you know, obviously, if you don't have your handout, you're not going to get it as well as if you've got something ready to go, you get to kind of move to the top line. And I guess I would look at it as, for Howard is, you know, looking at the one over on, with this college driver, you've got the three, the water sewer and the storm sewer. You know, the ones that you've got, you know, rated as all three of the, I guess I would rate them as one of a more important one due to the fact you've got three in an area. I guess that's how I would start it, would start with three down to two, down to one. You know, it really doesn't matter if there's a, what price or the dollar amount is, it's just the importance of getting those done. And that's been, that's, you know, we've noticed over the last probably three, four years, and just picking on that one there, but three, four years, we're under, keeps undercutting underneath. We've had the issues, so that's how I would recommend to go on for it is, you know, pick your importance and whatever the dollar amount, the dollar amount is.
I would, I would agree with that. Also like to just comment that when you look at the areas that obviously have all three points, if there was some major water marine break, sanitary, what is going to be the biggest impact on icy water street? As far as diverting traffic and disruption of business? So that type of thing, is that taken into consideration as well as?
That's part of it. Yep.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so tonight, I believe we're talking about 630,000. We're talking about the seven areas that we as a group talked about at a work session on the 13th. And now those seven areas have been further refined with some numbers. And Adam has said that an endorsement of this would not mean audiovisual, audiovisual technology upgrades to City Hall. I'm spent, we're giving $100,000. That's an estimate, but he would come back or staff would come back and say, this is what we can do, this is one step, this is one step. Do you, now do you want to spend this money for this? Or do you want to cut some of this or did we forget something?
Right, that is absolutely...
Same thing down with the public safety improvements. So estimated cost 100 grand, adding the 45 that's already in the CIP. So it'd be 145 because 45 is there. They've looked at this, but again, it would, it's basically endorsing the concept of these seven areas.
Correct, so some of the things we'll be looking at doing as we go into the 2022 budget process is with this in mind, we may, in our CIP, we may include that some of that, you know, we're going to be looking at for the next five years, we'll be doing camera potential projects or upgrades. But now knowing that some of that funding potentially is ARPA eligible, that will go into the CIP saying that project is being funded and allow for some considerations of, you know, what is that, how does that domino play out? Yes, obviously, all of these items in here are estimates. So what we're looking for tonight is essentially the green light to give council, the staff, the ability to really start honing in on these areas. You know, the HVAC upgrade is probably the closest one I can tell you. That's actually a quote that we have received. But other than that, the rest of them, as, as Council President Dos indicated, really are truly estimates. And then we as staff will be doing kind of our due diligence, looking into what makes the most sense, you know, coming up with kind of policies and procedures and bringing those back to the council to be officially decided upon.
And then also through that, doing the due diligence to see that if, in fact, we spend this money on this thing...
Is going to be eligible.
Eligible.
That is key question number one.
That is the question number one because if you guys have been reading your league material, you know that that's a moving target. It kind of changes on a...
Depends on the day.
Changes on a daily basis. I was going to say weekly, but it kind of changes on a daily basis as to what is and what isn't eligible. So questions, comments, ideas about these seven basic areas?
I just want to make one comment. So I know we know, but I don't make sure that the general public and some of the public knows the fact that the reason we've chosen this area is because the federal government has limited on where these funds can go to.
Correct.
So if people ask, well, why did you choose these? It's because we've kind of been directed to have them in those areas.
Exactly.
Right, at least we think that's, these are not, these are the areas we think that have been approved now.
As the target moves every day, yes. On, on item number four, the Housing Authority Security Deposit Loan Fund, were we not talking about that being a revolving loan?
Yes, so that is the intention, is we will work with, obviously, the Housing Authority.
Does that word need to be in there?
No, because we're going to bring that officially back to, that'll have to be in agreement. That'll have to be because of the fact that the Housing Authority is, is a, it's a separate organization from the city. There'll have to be an agreement with the Housing Authority on, you know, what makes sense for them. Again, we'll have to review with the Housing Authority guidelines as well as the ARPA guidelines to see what specifically, you know, what can be done, what can't be done and so that we can come to consensus to make sure that we're where we need to be.
And we thank Joyce Bous and Joanne Wilson, who are both members of the Housing Authority for joining us tonight, so.
for joining us tonight, so.
I have a question.
Sure.
Maybe I missed it, but item seven.
Yes.
Should that have a different heading? Industrial Park Storm Water Retention Pond, 250,000. Is that, is that the correct heading?
So that is where we have to consider to allocate the money towards is as we talked about in the, when we did the work session, we talked about storm water projects and the number one storm project that is kind of on the priority list, or if you look at the map, one of them that is kind of in that higher dollar range is a potential industrial park expansion, which again has impacts on everything, you know, that's one of the reasons there is the ARPA funding is because of issues with, you know, reductions in revenues and obviously with, you know, issues that we're seeing with projects being delayed because of that, it's caused, you know, problems. So that's why we identified that specific area to kind of be a focus.
But you also gave out this year with all the different projects.
Correct. So that's where when we get into phase two, the other 630,000, we specifically could look at earmarking, as kind of Howard indicated, there may be the potential, you know, we have 250,000, where that also is kind of a moving target as we've talked about. It may be necessary that the remaining 630 may need to be allocated towards one project or that'll be more discussion that'll obviously be had with the council and obviously with the public that can weigh in on, you know, some of those priority projects that have been identified on that map, you know, that may rise to be more important than that one.
Well, I was looking at seven from standpoint, we have retention pond along East Side Road as you go out to the hospital.
And that grant, that provides storm water for the western part of the industry park. It doesn't provide storm water capabilities for the eastern side of the park, which is the issue. There's a kind of a hill there.
Well, basically that was the newer part, as you say, the south and, and western portions of the industry park. The north and eastern portions, the older portions of the park were developed prior to the storm water regulations going in. But if somebody wants to expand a business, then they have to meet the current storm water requirements onsite or, or in a regional. And, and we're proposing to make a regional facility to help multiple businesses in that, in that older section of the industry park.
It would have been helpful to say east side.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? And if not, does anybody have a motion to offer?
I move to authorize staff to utilize APRA funds towards the development of project items one through seven, in which would, would be brought back to the council for final approval.
We have a motion by Kathy and a second by Eileen to authorize city staff to utilize ARPA funds toward these projects, one through seven, but to bring back specifics as they move forward. Candace will vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that's the last of, oh no, yes, that's the last of our action items on tonight's agenda. The next item on our agenda is a request to amend the historic designation at 130 Market Street. Joe.
Yes, the, the owners of the property at 130 Market Street, Lisa and Jeff Haas, have submitted a, a letter to the city requesting that their property be undesignated or the designation be amended, so that would no longer be considered a, a part of the Main Street Commercial Historic District. This is a process that is outlined in chapter 27, the Historic Preservation Ordinance. So there is a process that needs to be followed to consider that request. Kind of the first part of that was the, the, the letter being submitted, which they've done. The Historic Preservation Commission did hold a public hearing regarding that request after staff provided the required notice to surrounding property owners and the public. The commission did vote to deny that request at that meeting that was, took place after I had done this staff report, so that wasn't in there. So technically they're making a recommendation to the council, it's up to the council to make the final decision, but their recommendation is to deny. Staff also would recommend denial based on the information that was submitted at the public hearing. We didn't see any indication of what would set that part, property apart from any other properties in the district that would warrant treating it any differently than the other properties in the district. One area that was brought to my attention that I overlooked when I did the summary sheet, the, the vote required on that sheet says majority, but a commission member, actually Mr. Prohaska pointed out that the ordinance calls for basically following the same voting procedure as when the property was designated. So that would require a three quarters vote in favor in order for that designation.
To be removed.
Rescinding to be approved. So that will have to be updated for next time. So any questions at this point from me?
Questions of Joe. We only had one person request to speak and that's Gary Prohaska, and he would like to speak for information purposes only.
My name's Gary Prohaska. I live at 280 Division Street here in Platteville, Wisconsin, and I'm on the Historic Preservation Commission. This is just a, a, to give you additional information that I had sent you an attachment and an email, and I just wanted to make mention of a few things that I thought were really important in that. I reviewed, well, for one thing, I was requested to kind of research the processes that were used across the country, whatever information I could get. First place I went was the Wisconsin Historical Society to see what they had. And then I dug much deeper. This is all to referring to the historic designation amendment for 130 Market Street. As the HPC had the hearing on the matter, July 20th, 2021, I suspect you probably haven't received the minutes because we have to approve the minutes, to my understanding, before they come to the council. And you won't receive those approved minutes until after you have made this determination, whether to rescind or not. Points to ponder that I've, I've had on this historic designation, and I used this letter on the 20th of July, 2021. I researched this process that is used in rescinding historic designation. Many of the suggestions and laws have been forwarded to me by the members of the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions, many who are attorneys in preservation law. I've also reached out to the Wisconsin State Historical Society, the Wisconsin Trust of Historic Preservation, Wisconsin Association of Preservation Commissions, which I'm a member on the board. And I've also, I didn't mention it before, but I also went to the Carnegie University of Law Law Library. So this is where all my information comes from. I was, I have researched that process quite thoroughly and I've assembled everything so far. Now I've got additional information, of course, which you probably don't need, it's, it's overkill. I've been directed by a few cities who have a specific process removal of a local landmark designation in their ordinance. And they've all said, if it's used and it's, it's been put into ordinances across the country, it's likely to be defensible. And the key here is I believe to focus on the process and the city protecting itself from lawsuits. There's a legal process for designation and criteria that has to be met to qualify for designation, which we have in our ordinance. This process also precedes the methods to rescind or removal from designation. To rescind a property designation in a reverse order would have to happen, would be able to stand up to legal scrutiny. And our landmark and delandmarking process have to be clearly established, fair, consistent and not subject, subjective if they're to be defensible. And that's one problem we've got with our ordinance at present, is it isn't some clarification process as to what's approved. I would suggest we do update some things in our ordinance. At this time, there's no direct correlation with the process of creating a historic district or site. So as we have a process that's used for creation of the historic designation in our ordinance, we must use the same law, the process to declassify, and Joe has mentioned that. Question one, is this structure is designated and placed on a state and national register as part of the district and it's not designated as an individual site or building? So the entire district comes underneath this whole standing. As such, I've been told that the process would have to proceed for removal of the entire district as it stands. And I don't really, I don't feel this procedure, it would be an unraveling of our historic district and jeopardize the owners of other structures to liability. And this could possibly go to historic tax credits, which a number of them have used. This leaves the, leaves the process, when not spelled out in our ordinance, that it's can be legally, it needs to be a legally defensible process that's been used by our community and not spelled out and directly into our ordinance. And as I went down through the, the letter and the email that I've got, I've got a number of citations and I also placed in it the exact email, not the exact email, but the, the heading that you put in your search engine and pull up the exact stuff. One thing that really concerns me is we have, one thing that's at issue is that there's a cost to a number of these things. And if you're designated on a state and national register, I feel that the city needs to promote historic tax credits. Now, right now, I don't know how many of you are aware, but those historic tax credits amount to 50% of the project. Where can you get a return on your money? Also, it was passed a week ago Friday at the national level, they put down tax credits. I haven't gotten dug deep enough into it, but it's more for promoting local pieces, not these big projects. So if a person needs a porch, they need a furnace, they need wiring, they need heating and ventilation, a roof. These all can be applied under the historic tax credits. If they're designated on a state and national, then they, that half the project is already taken care of. They just have to put down what they want. Now, of course, everything isn't included, cupboards aren't included, carpeting is included. Floor refishing is, painting is. So I mean, there's a lot of stuff there and I think the, the city is somewhat negligent. I mean, Ken and I have walked down Main and given flyers out in the past. He took one side, I took the other, trying to promote the historic tax credits. HPC has also done that, yes.
Gary, let's wrap it up.
Okay. Anyway, I just wanted to mention to you that what the process has needs to be legally defensible. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that will be moved then to action at our next meeting. Next, we have the Platteville Community, oh, any question, any questions before we move on? Okay, next we have the Platteville Community Arboretum City Working Agreement. Howard?
Yes, I must apologize. I need to, I, I'm going to recommend that we put this back on for information next time because I, I found out that for some reason, the strike through language that I talked about in my, in my staff note, didn't get into the agreement that's attached to your packet. So I'm going to have to ask that we pass on this for now and bring it back for information next time with the, with the appropriate agreement. I apologize.
Then let's move on to the next item on our agenda, which are the city goals, the second quarter report. Adam?
Yeah, so obviously this is the kind of quarter two update for everything that's going on with the 2021 city goals that we have. So staff was able to kind of update information since the last time we presented, which just had quarter one kind of information in there. And as you can see, we are continuing to do a lot of stuff. So you can see the fire department analysis was completed and now we've been working, the fire chief and I, along with staff, have been kind of working on explaining those findings to organizations, going to meetings. We have created a timeline, obviously to implement some of those recommendations. So those are going to be going in front of the planning commission here, starting in quarter three, and eventually it'll make its way to the council. We obviously have done a couple of different marketing campaigns, so we've had information in the 53818 newsletter that went out. Also, Fire Chief Simmons has started to meet with individual organizations, explaining kind of the findings and the features during a Good Morning Platteville segment in June. I obviously have been going around as well and explaining information. We obviously have been doing a lot in regards to fundraising discussions with local grassroots organizations, county, state and federal legislatures. So common council leadership and I have had a lot of meetings with all of our federal legislators, both in the senate and the House of Representatives in regards to potentially having this project be an earmark. That process has been very productive and that is continuing to go through the appropriate committees and subcommittees. So we hope to have some updates here shortly, probably in the next couple of months, kind of on going on with that. As well as we've obviously been meeting with Senator, both Travis Tranel and Senator Howard Markline in regards to this project as well. So, and the governor, we just had the governor here about, I think that was last week, where we were able to have a, a short, about five minutes, but we're able to get a quick plug in there about the needs for the fire station. So we're encouraged about that. Obviously with TIDE, we have been holding monthly meetings and they actually met at four o'clock today and are working on kind of a couple of initiatives that have been tasked to them. One, if you remember, is the flag policy, which actually will now be coming back to the council with some recommendations that they're looking at doing, as well as they're looking into a couple of other initiatives related to homelessness, they wanted to take on some asset mapping. So that definitely has been very productive and they're continuing to have conversations about potential events or things that they could look at doing in 2022 in regards to the strategic plan. In regards to our kind of marketing and mission statement, if you remember, that now has officially been passed. So that information now is up on our website. Jody has been working on putting something in the newsletter, so she's been doing a great job there and is going to be working on a couple of different campaigns to get on social media. So we'll be working on that here in quarter three. Obviously celebrating Historic Preservation Week, we definitely did that and we promoted that through a lot of different social media channels and options. We are working on kind of coordinating a community-wide marketing theme. So we've obviously, if you've been noticing, have been doing a couple of different videos. We have the Platteville Pickaxe video that we've been working on, which we're going to have a new one with, spoiler alert, the dog park eventually here will be coming. We just filmed one with that. So that was kind of an interesting one and fun one to do. Obviously, if you've seen, our police department has definitely taken the initiative on doing marketing videos and has a variety that have been going out. So we've been trying some different things. And then the Platteville Economic Partners is looking at kind of long-term, what could be some marketing initiatives there through some drone videos or different things like that. So we're definitely excited to kind of see where that goes. We're also going to be, be starting to look at again, how we can kind of do some more historical flyers and different things along those lines to meet some of those strategic initiatives we had about telling a better story about our history. If you look through the Thoughtful Development and Prosperous Economy sections, we're continuing to work with Paydeck and Grant County in those initiatives. Obviously, the incubator is currently going through their construction phase right now. They plan to have an open house in September, so that definitely is exciting. Joe, obviously as our community development director, did a heck of a job on the subdivision regulations and other regulations. So we've made those updates and that now has been approved by the council. We're continuing to review obviously some options and alternatives for single family housing within the city. So we're hopeful that that'll kind of divulge further into some options. You know, we continue to be advertising the TIF closure program that we had in, in regards to having homes that can apply for grants, for any type of assistance there with homes that are built before 1950. Obviously, we have implemented the accounts payable software that we wanted to do this year, and we've talked about the CIP process, so that's going to be coming in front of the council here in August. And then again, looking into infrastructure, we have met a couple of times with different groups that are interested in kind of a community center or YMCA type concept. We've held a couple of preliminary conversations and now we've brought in the school district to those conversations to see how the future may entail into those. Our parks department has been working on kind of what they call recess program for kids to be able to go to during the summer and has been trying Um, our Parks Department has been working on kind of what they call recess program, uh, for kids to be able to go to during the summer, and has been trying that. Um, we just recently got the Hammer Robbins Building, uh, approved by the county, so that project is moving forward. Um, and obviously, as you can see throughout the rest of this here, we've been doing a lot of different things in regards to reviewing the CIP projects that we had for two thousand twenty-one, um, working on the expansion, the Dairy Day Shed, the Tennis Court resurfacing, and all of our other projects. So with that, I will take, I guess, any questions that you might have.
Okay, questions of Adam on any of the, uh, ongoing projects associated with the strategic plan? I think you've been, I think people have been busy, and I think we see that, so, good. All right, next on our agenda are, for information and discussion, are the council rules.
Yes, um, so obviously, again, this is going to be something that is going to be on the agenda for multiple meetings. Um, we had a meeting with staff and obviously our city manager intern, um, on Friday. He is gonna be planning probably at the first August meeting to give you guys a presentation. Um, what he was tasked with was kind of looking into, uh, I gave him five municipalities, and he actually found a couple of other ones, and his task was to basically look at their council rules or whatever they are if they're a village, and look at their rules and regulations, um, is and is going to be doing a presentation for you guys that kind of outlines what he found, um, looking into kind of some of the similarities, some of the differences, um, and any recommended changes, obviously, that, um, you know, he thinks would make sense, and obviously we will review as staff. Um, so that is gonna be kind of the next step in this process, but obviously, tonight is an opportunity to kind of discuss any questions or thought processes that you have had in regards to the rule changes. Just to kind of quickly go through some of them, you know, some of the topics that we've discussed are about, uh, you know, the time of our meetings, um, looking into, obviously, uh, not all of our meetings are held in the council chambers as it currently states. So looking at maybe an update to this section that would include that. Um, also, obviously, the number one question that we continue to get is, as we've talked about with technology, is will we allow for hybrid meetings, options, Zoom options? Um, that's something that, you know, we're gonna be looking for kind of council guidelines or guidance on what you would like to see for those commission meetings, is are you okay with certain meetings being able to do that? That may be a recruitment tool. That may be also be a inclusive diversity and equity tool, giving people another option instead of having to come into the building. Um, so those are things, obviously, that we're all gonna be discussing. Number two really is just kind of cleaning up some language about kind of electronically, uh, being able to get information. Rule number three, I think, is one that is definitely we're gonna want to discuss, which is the definition of a quorum. So as we've talked about with, uh, potentially with hybrid meetings and with Zoom meetings and everything else, um, is, you know, what does the council want to define as a definition of? Is it for people within the council chambers? Is it a combination? Um, those are things that we kind of need to kind of get to a consensus point on where people want to go with that. Um, rule number five, really nothing too, uh, in-depth to change there. Uh, we've talked about with rule number four, um, you know, making some changes potentially to the addition of closed session, uh, also looking at changing the consent calendar to the consent agenda, just some small minor things there. And then as we get into, again, rule number nine is really just kind of some, uh, more, uh, cleaning up changes there. Uh, same thing with rule number eleven. Um, and then kind of going through, again, there's a couple of, rule number fourteen is one that, uh, potentially could consider some reworking. Uh, again, that's the kind of complicated process as to if something is denied, how do you bring it back to the table, those type of things. Uh, those are all things we can kind of discuss with Robert's Rules of Order. Um, again, I know that was another one, too, that we want to kind of look at is, you know, is there a particular version that is kind of the consensus of what, um, the council members would like to utilize or we would like to utilize as a city? Um, so again, these are all things that, uh, we're gonna continue to review. So I guess the homework I'll ask you is to keep kind of looking at these, look at the current rules. Um, our game plan is at the next meeting is to kind of get a synopsis of what other municipalities have done, the good, the bad, and the ugly. Um, and then, you know, as we get further into it, uh, start diving a little deeper into, uh, some more concrete discussion. My thought processes will maybe focus on, you know, certain rules that we think are gonna be more time-consuming and just focus on those at a meeting, um, and kind of go from there. So any questions, comments, or concerns?
Questions, comments, or concerns? Adam, are you, did you say at one point that the council, the adopted council rules become then the adopted rules for all boards, committees, and commissions?
So that is typically how our current ordinances functions, correct. Is the rules that are adopted by the council are also the rules that are then followed by the other committees, commissions, um, unless they have their own set of bylaws that have been approved, which is typically pretty rare.
Okay, which would be that, for instance, the Housing Authority probably has its own.
Correct. Right. They have their own rules. The redevelopment authority kind of has their own rules. The TIDE committee, the TIDE task force has some different, um, parameters that they follow. Um, so again, that's something that could kind of be discussed as we go through this process. And do you want to get more into the weeds of officially defining that? Or typically by that, um, there's a section in here that reads that basically, these are the rules of the council, commissions, boards, and everything else, so.
Anybody with any other comments, questions?
When is this coming back for more serious discussion?
I believe, Ken, that, uh, Adam said at the next meeting, uh, Ben, our intern, would be making a presentation on council rules in other municipalities that we might want to consider also.
At the next meeting?
At the next meeting. Ben will be making a presentation. But if you have ideas of changes, additions, things that should be deleted or whatever, uh, you should at any time now send those along to Adam so that he can add him in the discussion part of the, the, uh, memo.
Yep.
Okay. All right, well, that is the last item on our information and discussion agenda for tonight. Uh, the tenth item on our agenda is a closed session per Wisconsin Statute nineteen eight-five, parent one, parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, and this is, uh, in specific about economic development. So I would take a motion to adjourn to closed session and from closed session to adjourn. We do not intend to take action during closed session, so we would not, uh, return to open session.
Correct. So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Jason, a second by Isaac, to go to closed session per Wisconsin Statute nineteen eight-five, parent one, parent E. Candace will vote?
Arts?
Yes.
Chanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.